Educating, informing, serving. Effect TV, keeping government honest.
Welcome to the Rockingham Select Board Regular Meeting. Tuesday, December 15, 2020. The time is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting? We want to add Kelly, Kelly Tully to the Rockingham Energy Committee?
Yes, the appointment.
Add that to the agenda. Anything else? Or would we like that?
Number three or two A, or number three, and then we'll push everything down.
Do three B? Okay. Two B? Okay.
Hey, Peter, can you turn your mic on?
How's that?
Great, thank you.
We need to approve the minutes of the December 1st meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes to December 1st, 2020 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes to approve the minutes. Are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Three minutes per person? I don't think so.
I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Okay. Managers report.
Just a couple items quickly. I know at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about some of the capital maintenance items that are in this building specifically related to the roof. Since we had that meeting, we've also had some updated numbers associated with the clock tower itself and the clock and some repairs that are necessary there, as well as potentially some brick pointing that was deferred from previous years. The roof is roughly, the rolled roof, it's about 120,000 roughly for a new membrane, because we did not have that number for you at the last discussion. The brick pointing on the north side of the building, as well as on the southern side of the building, is about 15 to 16 grand, depending upon how extensive we want to do it. That's a more recent add-on. And then the repairs to the clock tower area is about another 10 grand. So we do not formally propose some additional capital work as we get closer to, you know, we go through the department head meetings and then we get into more of our final budget discussions. I'll bring those back up in a memo to you for consideration as to how you might want to address some of this as we go forward. I just want to give you updates on those numbers since we had talked about those at the last meeting.
What was the roof?
120,000.
For which, which section?
It's three sections of the roof. So the three flat sections. We'd also fix some of the drainage where we're having some of the drains that are clogging, which I think is potentially part of our leak problem.
Most of it was new, and there was one section left that wasn't new that wasn't insulated. I'm not sure where we're
This goes back to 2017.
Where we're talking three sections.
So I'll show, I've got the proposal. I'll put it in a memo to you and give you the update.
Okay. And then just a question. We had budgeted some money for brick pointing of the south side of this building last year.
Right.
Yeah, never got done, 50 grand maybe?
Okay.
Keep that in mind when we're looking for
Yeah, the proposals that I've seen are substantially less than that. So I think we can go ahead and, as we talk about, you know, what we want to do, we can put all that together.
Okay.
Obviously, it's not the time of year now to do brick pointing, but we'll want to consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Move on to the agenda. Item number one. Library budget review. Hi there, you're up.
Unmuted.
Hi, good. You can hear you now.
Hi, everybody.
Hi there.
I'll present an overview, and then you can ask me questions. Last year for FY '20, the library ended up under budget. Some of this is due to savings on health insurance incentive, property liability insurance, and an early payment from a trust account. We're still waiting for final figures on several line items to know how much we were able to save. As for the current year, FY '21, we are projecting that we'll be over budget. This is due to the unplanned cut to our tax appropriation of $12,600, as well as other unexpected costs such as COVID-19 sanitizing and PPE. We have found savings in several areas, including payroll and benefits, where one open position has been left unfilled and one status change made for health insurance incentive. We've made savings in other areas to bring the projected shortfall down to $8,600. Over the next six months, we will continue with our fundraising efforts, including the annual appeal and the book sale, and we will look for ways to economize to come as close as possible to a balanced budget. For FY '22, we are proposing a budget of $428,286. The level funded tax appropriation of $379,250. This will be the third year in a row with a level funded tax appropriation. The overall, this budget is a total decrease of $13,425 from last year's budget. We're able to level fund tax revenue because of reductions to health insurance incentive due to the employee status change, property and liability insurance being lower. And lastly, we are leaving one part-time position unfilled for now. The library board will greatly appreciate your support for this budget. In addition, the board is planning to submit a petition with voter signatures to ensure that this budget article is included in the town's annual report as proposed by the library board. And finally, as for library activities, last spring, we offered curbside service once COVID-19 became a problem. In summer and fall, we offered both curbside service and in-person visits. And just recently, we returned to providing curbside service only due to the rising rates of COVID-19. Once the governor says the situation is back under control, we'll return to having in-person visits. In the meantime, we continue to check out materials to patrons, provide copying, printing, scanning, and faxing services, and we work remotely with patrons, issuing library cards, taking new materials requests and into library loan requests, providing tech help, and assisting with learning how to use our online resources, such as Listen Up Vermont audio and eBooks. Providing these services to patrons who are not coming into the library is very labor-intensive, and so we have been kept pretty busy. So that's about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Yeah, Peter, go look here. I do appreciate the fact that you're trying to keep your salaries fairly consistent here. I noticed there's a slight decrease going on to 20 and 22 from the 21 budget, but I'm a little confused that with all the COVID and things going on, that you're still at 25% of salary and benefit expenditures this year, even with the building being closed up or not, you know, having in-person visits there. Can you explain why that is?
When we presented this to the library board, it was earlier in the year. That's why the actual figures are as of the end of September, because that was the last monthly figures that we had that we sent to the board. When we looked at it, it was right at the beginning of November. We hadn't gotten the October figures yet. So these aren't right up to date to, you know, the end of November. This does not include the most recent month. You don't have that, Mary, the most recent? But we're right on target for payroll. We're definitely under the budget.
I think his question was, wouldn't it be under budget with the building being closed?
Well, we don't know what, we haven't had our union negotiations yet, so we don't know. We left it in at the regular. Let me just see how it looks.
And I'd add to his question. Heating and cooling expenses and custodial expenses, none of those were reduced during the, how long were you closed and just curbside?
Well, we were closed for a few weeks, and then one, then we had people coming in, one on the top floor and one on the bottom floor. And so the library ended up being used. When did we close? Mid-March, the third week in March?
Close to the public.
Close to the public. And then, you know, we were all staying at home according to the governor's orders, but then we came back into the library a few weeks later and started, you know, using the, we were in the building every day. Staff were working in the building. And we planned our curbside and began the curbside service in April.
Just the staff were in the building? For how long was it closed to the public is my question?
We were closed to the public until the end of July, I think, is when we started having in-person people coming in, visits, in-person visits.
And there's no savings in custodial or heating and cooling expenses during that time?
No, because we were in here Monday through Friday, working, you know, providing our curbside service to people, so we did not save on, you know, heating or cooling during that time. And he was still coming in, you know, the custodian took up, he started, because we lost Bruce, who used to do our, all our recycling run, and that was on a weekly basis, our custodian started doing that in his place. So we didn't reduce his hours. And as far as the budget's concerned for salary, you'll see that for this year, we're projecting the same for me, full-time. We just kept it as it was because we haven't done the union negotiations. And the part-time, we have reduced because we haven't filled the part-time position that opened up last summer.
And how many staff do you have currently, full-time and part-time?
We currently have eight employees. We have three full-time, six part-time. The full-time equivalent is 4.96. And only two of them are in the union. The two full-timer in the union. I'm the director, so I'm not in the union.
I mean, I'm personally not prepared to accept this budget right now. I think if you look at what the highway, for instance, some services in the, in the town, the services we provided in the reduction in spending during this pandemic, we provided 100% service in most everything except theater at a significantly reduced budget. Taking into account the pandemic, where many folks have lost their jobs, businesses have closed, I think it sends, sends the right message that we're being very cautious with our spending, knowing ultimately, these budgets are funded by tax dollars. I still don't believe we've seen the impact in taxes received from this pandemic. So through hard work and moving some things around, we've reduced spending significantly here and provided the same service. I don't see that here in this budget.
Well, expenses do rise. Taking care of a building this size is expensive, and we have not increased the tax revenue for three years in a row. I think that's important to remember, even though there are expenses that have gone up. So we have, you know, where we've cut back on materials, we have cut back on, you know, books and other materials that we get for the public, but then we have other expenses that we have to provide online resources, which many people are using right now, since they're staying close to home and not coming into the library. So we feel like this is a very responsible budget. We're very busy. Providing this in-person and curbside service is very labor-intensive, and it would be hard to do without our staff that we have right now. And I foresee that next year, we're gonna, when we open up again, which hopefully will be by next FY '22, we'll be very busy, more than ever, because people will be stopped for use of the computers and having programs again in the library. So I hate to cut any further than this when the demand is going to be even greater for our services.
Anybody else?
No, I was just gonna, this is Susan, I was just gonna say the same thing, that we have to remember that we're, ideally, we're back in a, moving towards the more normal situation when this budget hits in the summer. I mean, if we all get the vaccine and where things are okay. The other thing I wanted to mention is the library during COVID, library staff were very, very busy working on reaching out to community members to make sure that they had what they needed, that they had food, that they were accessing the various COVID relief programs. So they weren't doing nothing during that time. They were very busy, and I worked with them particularly on making sure community members in need were getting what they needed. So I wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
I never said they weren't doing anything. I don't think I ever
I know that, but I'm just saying that I don't want that, that impression to get out there, that if the library doors were closed, doesn't mean they were not working. And I'm not saying you gave that impression, I'm just clarifying it.
I'm saying that the majority of the spending is for that facility, which was closed, and for the staff. And I appreciate level funding for the last three years, but we haven't had a pandemic in the last three years. I'm specifically pointing to the 2021, how we didn't, I'm not showing any savings there, where, that's, that's my question. Moving forward, who knows what's going to happen in 2022? My questions were for this, what's being presented for 2021 projected budget and how I'm not seeing any savings.
Well, I appreciate Susan mentioning that. I forgot to mention that in some ways, we were like a clearinghouse when this first began, when COVID-19 first began, and we were providing information on our website for the Rockingham Help and Helpers Group and answering, fielding many questions when people didn't know who to call. So we had a lot of, we were answering a lot of reference questions during that, the first couple of months. And we continue to play that role, staying in touch with local community organizations to support them and to support, you know, our residents. You know, when this happened, it was April. So by then, to cut our budget for, you know, last year, we did cut materials and, but there wasn't, you know, there were only a few months left in the, in the year. And so this year, we don't, we didn't, we cut materials, but we didn't want to be too drastic because a lot of people are reading right now, and they're depending on us for all these materials. And so we didn't want to do that, and, you know, we need the staff to provide all these services. It's, it's very labor-intensive what we're doing right now. So we'll be very happy come next summer, when people are coming in and doing their own browsing and shopping for books, doing their own copying and, you know, using our various equipment. And we can't wait to get back to normal.
Yeah, Ben Misher here. I would have to agree that the budget seems a little bit high for what's going on right now, and we don't know what the future holds. I personally think the library budget has been way too high for years now, so that's just my two cents.
Anything else, Stefan?
We're good at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we thank you all for coming and presenting your budget this evening. Anything else, Susan, Peter? No, I'm good.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Item number two. Development Review Board appointment. We have some information in our packets, we've all seen it. Everyone has that, correct?
Correct.
Any questions, concerns? Do we have a suggested motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Archie Gleason to serve on the Development Review Board effective December 15, 2020, and ending December 1, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to appoint, reappoint Archie Gleason, serve on DRB Board effective December 15, 2020, ending December 1, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you very much. Number three, we have to ratify
Two B.
Oh, two B, yes. We have another appointment here. Anyone have that? Information?
No, Sue has it, we just got it.
You have that, Sue?
From Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, I have it.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Kelly, Kelly Tully, excuse me, to the Rockingham Energy Committee as a part of the body of the Rockingham Conservation Commission. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to appoint Kelly Tully to the Rockingham Energy Committee. It's a part of the Rockingham Conservation Commission. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Now we can move on to item three. Need to ratify the Local 98 Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move as part of the negotiating committee that we ratify the union Local 98 Agreement. And authorize the chairman to sign the document. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to ratify Local 98 Agreement, authorize a chair to sign. Any questions? All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, now we're on to item number four, budget review with department heads.
Okay, so I think Shannon and I are going to tag team this a little bit. We had hoped to have Andy here this evening, but his son is home on military leave, so he's on, only on a short-term leave and wanted to spend time with his son. So if you have any specific highway questions, I'll make sure to bring him to a future meeting, but just wanted to let you know why he wasn't here this evening to present anything specific. But I guess with that, Shannon, you want to go ahead and start, and then we'll, we'll go from there?
Sure. So the first document that I provided to you guys, we had discussed about some, we had discussed some of these items previously, but some of the things in which we can do to either decrease this budget or offset some of the expenses, things like that, would be to eliminate the tax sale. We've been talking about that for quite a bit now. I'm not sure where you all stand or if you want to hold it. That would reduce 50K in expenses. We have 22,000 for the development director. I'm not sure whether or not, we have an additional 22, I'm not sure whether or not the village is going to want to reimburse you for that additional money, so that'll need to be a decision, whether we make that position full-time dependent on the village or not. I'd like to put in 50,000 in revenue to offset the 50,000 in COVID expenses that sit there. And then other things that we'll need discussion are the articles for the Bridge Capital Fund, articles for additional paving maintenance, and whether or not you want to use funds from the general fund to offset this budget.
I'll add just one other item here. We're still working on our road erosion inventory for our town roads, and I have to report back to the state on things that we've done this year, improvements we've made, and then projects that we're anticipating we're going to try to complete for next year. So Andy and I have been working on the list. I don't have that completed yet. It's due at the end of December, so I will get that to you. Certainly, like anything else in this budget, you can always do more. You know, there's an, I think there was 900 and some odd locations in the last inventory that they sent to us that potentially are areas for additional improvements, whether it's new gravel or widening or other hydraulic improvements. We could certainly spend unlimited amounts of money and unlimited manpower, basically just going around improving ditches. And I think you guys are all well aware of some of our, you know, areas of concern. We try to attack them as, you know, as we can with the monies that we have available and the staff we have available. But at this point, I was not going to add significant new funds to do additional work unless the board feels motivated that they wanted to add some additional funds to tackle additional locations. I'll sort of let that sit for discussion, and as we've got other articles here, that's another item that I know has been brought to many of your attentions. As we get more and more rain events and more and more flooding events, people tend to complain to you folks about why hasn't this been done or why has the maintenance fallen behind? So that's an area that, again, if we're looking at where we might want to invest additional money because we've had deferred maintenance, that's another area of concern. Just wanted to bring it to your attention and let you know that we're still filling in the gaps on, on some of these areas.
Go ahead, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Peter.
No, I just, a couple of questions. On the tax sale, I do agree with you on the fact that we hold off on that at this time because of the pandemic, but I think we need to keep that in the back of our mind going forward. It would be nice to get a printout probably of the last three years of the people that are delinquent, because I think we're going to see that they're the same ones that are delinquent every year, just for historical reference. Second, in regards to that, I noticed that something I mentioned in the last meeting on the offset revenue on the tax sale, you noticed that you said you don't, on the COVID, you don't usually add the grant revenue, so that's just a minor thing. But could you tell me how many actual people we have working at the recycle center? I ran into two new ones the other day when I was down there, and I don't know if they're hired volunteer or what. I think one's hired.
Timers, they're there. So we do have some additional staff, but we've also, you know, we don't have, our we don't have our total budget is actually a little less in terms of we're not paying the same rates that we were paying before um with the previous staffing. So I think we're going to actually even it out. And these are these two folks that are also there also working for us um through the winter as shovelers. So they're supplementing some of our highway as well. So we'll see how that works out.
My my being a question, it looks like we got two, four, about six or seven people working down there. One of them is a volunteer. I know Terry, I don't know his last name, but he does electronics stuff out there. I know he volunteers. I don't think he's being paid. Is that correct? And I know the one of them, Brad told me about the uh, the woman that's working down there on the on the rubbish detail.
She's a shoveler, I guess. Additional winter coverage as well. Correct.
Okay. And I know Larry hired that other guy on the recycling to help air account. I I saw that going on, so.
And.
I just wonder how that is going to reflect on the 20,000 uh increase in personal costs. I think we're probably going to be a little higher than 20K, I think.
I think part of this is also you'll see additional offset. I think we've already seen increases in our um revenues that are coming in because we're capturing more of our volume like we had talked about. So I think we're more than offsetting the costs because I think we're able to focus on the loads that are coming in and making sure that people are getting weighed and we're getting appropriate uh amounts of money from folks that are bringing stuff in.
Okay. I will have more questions. I we just got this uh thing tonight handed to us, so.
No, that's the budget you guys have had for the previous month.
Yeah, I know. I'd just like to go see if there's any numbers that have been changed. So uh, I may have more questions later, but we'll worry about that later at the fine.
So um.
Is this a new uh sheet, excuse me, is this a new sheet on the uh debt service or it's the same thing that you gave us last time?
Nope, the budget and the debt are exactly the same. If I changed anything, I definitely highlight.
I know we talked about working, looking at that. I know Scott mentioned something about a few items that we might want to play around with. So I didn't know if this was some revision or something. So, okay.
Um, so at a high level, um, is there any particular department, you know, like you said, recycling or planning and zoning or highway that you um want to talk about or address?
I've been that if you had some items that you wanted us to do some research and do some work on, then when we come back to your next meeting, we'll have some information for you prior to the meeting. So I think it's more productive for the for the board as well as for the departments. You know, they can address areas of of concern or question. And it doesn't have to be tonight. If, you know, like you said, if there's time over the next, you know, few days or weeks and people have specific items, it just helps us to bring you materials and make sure that we're giving you the information and and we're, you know, it's a working uh, it it makes our work time together, you know, much more productive. So.
I know I had all my notes on the other uh, the other sheet that you're bringing here tonight, because.
I do have that sheet from your budget thoughts.
Uh, yeah, but it's just some other notes that was on the same printout that we just got tonight.
Okay.
And that way I can go in and and I can go over that with a flying tooth comb and flying tooth comb and and get together with you and Shannon. Just, you know, Shannon brought up an interesting uh concept uh the other day when I stopped in uh about instead of going line by line uh and taking a hundred dollars off here, 20 bucks there, 50 bucks there, and taking up a lot of time and effort to get into it, and it really doesn't do anything. If we just came up with, say, we want to reduce planning and zoning by 20,000 or 10,000 or something, just give it to you guys and say, we'd like to see that reduced uh and maybe highway or general fund reduced and see if you guys come up with with uh some ideas.
Yeah, I mean, we can always, you know, work through those exercises for everybody. And and the only thing is, and, you know, we are dealing with, obviously, we have a lot of vacancies. We've cut staff. So if we're reducing further, we're into talking about what programs are we not going to fully um, you know, fully complete. So I'm thinking about things like, like we talked about, our erosion and ditch programs and things along those lines, things that are probably not as um high profile, but certainly, you know, there are areas of of concern. We get calls and complaints, and I'm sure you get them as well.
Yeah.
So when I defer these things, that's just part of that discussion. You know, we can certainly defer and work towards a number if that's the pleasure of the board.
I was looking at numbers again. You may have mentioned it, but you'd brought up before um the postponing of purchase of a six wheeler for a year. Is that was that taken into account?
Yes, I've asked them to to look at the maintenance on that truck. And and again, if we don't have a horrific winter and it doesn't take a beating this winter, I think we're good to to push that for an additional budget cycle. Um.
And the loader was when? Loader was next?
Loader was the the following year. So that would be a a following year item. And we'll take a hard look at that as well. Um, again, I think.
Is that in here?
That is in the current list, but it has not been deferred. So I think as we get into the nitty gritty, the bottom line, those are some things we can look at, because those are large numbers. I think the loader was 220, and I think the six wheeler was like 185. Right.
Just just to speak on that, though, um, when we were talking about it, two things. One is the trade in for those were in the budget, so it won't completely be offset. And then the second thing for me would be, I would like to leave the allocation for the funds for the payments so that when we do purchase it next year, or if we're pushing it out two years, we have more money down and we're not paying interest on our loans.
Just.
Discuss with the board.
Just a note on that. When it comes to trade in, I do know, maybe we could look at um, so the last ten wheeler we traded in was sold for more, like a couple of weeks later, sold for significantly more than we traded in for.
Yeah.
So perhaps there's a, like we do with some other equipment, look at other ways. So we're getting, uh, you know, benefiting when we're trading it in, not just taking the number they give us.
Yeah, I agree. We want the highest value we can, we can certainly.
I also think we just got to be, you know, as well as I do, be careful about holding on stuff too long because those bills can rack up quick and you could be almost into a new truck by the time you're done. Like you said, depending on how the winter goes and whatnot, and what Wally thinks of how the truck's doing and whatnot.
Yeah, I've got, you know, so far, he's not telling me there's, you know, we're not looking at major items, you know, suspensions aren't leaking and.
Right.
You know, major systems are are okay. So, you know, I I'm feeling decent. But if we have, you know, a five or six week period, and you guys certainly know where we get slammed and those things are outrunning, it could change in a.
Exactly.
Month and a half. So I'm a little hesitant.
I also wasn't suggesting this this be a new direction we move in. I know that for a long time, equipment was neglected. And then and then we got on this equipment purchase plan before my time, which is great, and we've been following it. I just, it had come up uh week weeks back, and I remember hearing about it, perhaps pushing one another year was all I'm saying. I I don't, I also agree.
I don't disagree at all with that, with the times we're in.
I don't think it's good practice, but just if it's something we could look at this year.
Yes, I I agree.
In a difficult time.
Yeah, the replacement schedule still sits. And and I think we, it's pretty um, it's been a pretty good practice to follow. So I agree with uh with, you know, trying to continue that in the future if the revenues are there.
Does anyone have any specific questions at this time? Is there a um area you you'd like to talk about, or you have suggestions for at this time? You want to just spend some time and if you have any input, get back. Any any comments right now?
I why I just have one comment, and I don't need an answer now. This is just for for the next time we meet, is um, in the Development Director, uh, I know Gary has been working really hard and bringing in a lot of um grants, but it's hard. I I need, if we can get just a list of those in some way that's easier easier to digest than um, you know, here and there when we're voting on them um at the meetings, that would be very helpful for me, at least, just so he, because I know it's been, he's been very active and um and also and what we're looking towards in the future for potential grants in the next cycle. I know he has always has some on the back burner, but um, anyway, it would be very helpful to get a sort of a breakdown of what has been brought in through grants this year, through his work, and what some of the future things. Because the more time, I mean, having him full time means he's able to track down, chase down a lot of these grants and do the work in house. So I think it's very, I supported that last year to have him full time. I would support it this year for that reason. But I'd like to have that on paper so I can see it.
Yeah, we've been working on trying to get, you know, there's a lot of carryover grants, so we'll try to get prior years grants that aren't that aren't completed as well as grants that are in the pipeline and grants that we're looking at on the calendar that are going to be coming to you. So we'll we'll put it in that kind of format so everybody can see it. And hopefully that that'll help answer those questions, Sue.
And in addition to that, is that we'll be discussing it at our joint board meeting. I'm kind of interested in, I know it's a lot of work, Shannon, but perhaps um someone's been tracking the work that Gary's done for the village in specific. I'm interested in seeing those numbers and 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 what he did for the village. Uh, you know, in in hopes to get their support to also go to full time. I I supported Gary full time last year, but it seemed I heard, I'd like to see all the work he did for the village in in addition to Susan's request, if that's possible.
Absolutely. I think actually Susan's request and yours will um, when you write the list of grants, it will be for one municipality or the other. Um, I can tell you, I think it will be surprising because the a lot of what he's doing is for police and fire.
Correct.
But just after the board's done, um, there is public comment, just a heads up.
Yeah. And then so he, the village has been paying him hourly up to this point. It's kind of a separate topic, but I'm I'm looking at a, I'm just really interested in a list of what he's done.
They have not paid him hourly whatsoever.
I don't, I don't understand that part.
They have not um paid him hourly.
Okay.
But um, up until now, he was a sole employee of the town. Um, and then since COVID, and all of his costs are being allocated to COVID.
For for all the work for the village, for the fire and police?
Uh, right now, and quite a bit of the town, too. That's what he's working on is the reimbursements for everything for COVID.
Huh, okay.
Yeah, I I would, go ahead.
Wasn't there some work where he did some work for the water and sewer even? I mean, I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Interested in everything he's done that that's village specific.
Sure.
Also interested is to what has, like you say, what has come in, what's out there pending?
That was Susan's request.
Yeah, my 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 thing was follow up on the on all of this conversation is that if we could get a list of village specific uh grants, uh, I know even though that he got grants for stuff that happens in the village, it's not specifically for the village, it's a town entity. Uh, that gives us a little bit more ammunition and push to get him uh to full time. And once that's disclosed, I think um, it might be an easier push.
We'll definitely have that information for, you know, for the um, for review prior to that joint board meeting on the 29th.
Thank you.
The fault, this may not be under the same uh item, but in a way it is. Uh, the time that Chuck has spent uh on the housing ordinance uh should also be uh taken up. That's a village specific ordinance, and it 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 it, they should be paying for his time on that. He's a town employee. So I think we could figure out what what that's involved. I think Gattano's asked about that in the past, but.
Follow up on that. Yeah, I don't have that, Peter, but I'll follow up on it.
Yeah, for for our joint meeting, it might be interesting to toss that on the fire, too. So.
And and all these points are relevant to this budget, what we're working on. If 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 there's savings in this budget, um, that's the, that's the point of these questions today. Anything else right now?
Can I um, Scott and I have been discussing it, but we were uh discussing doing the paving maintenance a little different in that Susan had brought up how we were level funded for the year and um maybe putting it out there as an article for anything above the 350,000. So what we have in our schedule would be to bump it up to 450 this year. So just given the pandemic and given everything that's going on, perhaps making it an article and putting it in the hands of the residents.
Shannon, would that be moving money that's um surplus into that budget?
No, that was.
Requesting extra money?
Requesting extra.
Is there money in the surplus?
There is. There is, yes. And that was, that's something you guys could also kind of toss around. There's uh additional monies in the highway and the general. And I'll get you guys fund balances at the end of last year and then some estimations. Um, you know, they increased significantly last year, and they're looking to increase again this year, both in highway and general. So that is something that we could do this year to alleviate.
So you said there was a public comment, Shane?
Yes, Deb Wright would like to speak.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Um, my comment has to do with the report you're looking for from the Development Director on grants. Um, it's and it's not just about the grants that he's writing and the dollar amounts of which he's writing, which are pertinent, but how much are actually received. Writing grants is one thing. Actually obtaining them while everybody else is putting their hand in the same pot is a separate item. In addition to that, there are other um departments that are writing grants in our community, both in village and town. And that needs to be remarked upon and reported as well, because those can have a broader impact as well as what the Development Director is doing. If you want to do a grant writing report, it should be complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Good comment, Deb. I think that follows up on Sue's question, uh, seeing what was what was applied for and what we actually got. Well, that's what I was trying to say also. So, you know, I understand when we see here, um, it makes me a little cautious adding grant revenue in here as projected income, if that was to be the case. Um, you know, and I'm not picking on the fire department, but we talked about two trucks last year. And looking back hindsight, probably maybe it would have been prudent to have said, okay, if we got the grant, we buy two trucks. If not, we don't. Um.
We we know that we will be receiving um a minimum of over 150,000 for COVID reimbursement that will probably hit in FY22. So just to offset the expenses that we have in the budget and not raise taxes for those COVID expenses, I think is more than reasonable. It's like when you have a hurricane, um, you can project FEMA money. It's it's different than the typical grants that you are applying for where you have a 50/50 shot. This is money to help municipalities and other organizations recoup from this global pandemic.
Right, that may be different with COVID, but having sat here or on the other side in one capacity or another, whether it been Irene or Sandy, um, those monies took a while, substantial amount of time to come in for what came in.
So what what we've already applied for and essentially we're 100% guaranteed the reimbursement for is over 150,000. And that's what we would be projecting. So it, they essentially have a year and a half to come in to hit the FY22 budget.
Okay, that's fine.
We're being real, really, really conservative here. And probably in another three to six months, there'll be another reimbursement to apply for. And um, so, you know, I think very, to to just offset the expenses is realistic.
Okay, thanks.
Grants, we would never budget as revenue, because we we fully appreciate that that's a competitive environment, and these are just simply reimbursements. Now, timing is an issue, Stephen, as you had mentioned, and that's certainly a potential problem if the state doesn't do it on a timely basis. But so far, they seem to be committed to doing that.
So the COVID expenses that we're accumulating now, we don't expect to get reimbursed for another year. Is that correct?
Uh, no.
December 11th, we just submitted our our first large scale request, which was that number that Shannon was just talking about, that 150,000. So that went in.
Yeah, it's just something we need to keep in mind going forward, because I'm sure that's going to be a question. If the money's not there to cover it, you know, that means the tax rate's going up. So this town meeting, however it happens, they're. the tax rate's going up. So this town meeting, however it happens to go virtual or whatever.
Well, don't forget, that's already reflected in your current operating. And so you're already performing better than budget without that money. So you've spent that money. It's, it's already, you know, reflected in your budget and you're already, you know, performing better than budget. So if that money comes in, it's sort of an enhancement on top. And I think that's.
Just helps the, the populace when they, for them to understand it and to pass the budget.
No, I agree.
All right. Anything else right now? Anyone? Okay, thank you, guys, and we'll look forward to that information and, and the next discussion. So besides Andy, was anyone else? So for tonight, so like on our January 5th, are we going to have department head present? Do we know or?
So that was a question we wanted to bring to you guys because in, in, you know, we pretty much have level funded this budget. So is it, would you guys like a presentation from Chuck, as you know, for planning and zoning? He's pretty flat.
I don't, but I, I'd like to hear about the rec, if there's any changes, what's going on.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking is if you could tell us. So, you know, rec for theater, in, until we have anything solid, we're leaving revenue and expenses at zero because we won't move forward. Then we won't move forward with the theater unless it would be revenue generating for the town. But we can have Ryan come in to discuss rec. So, you know, recycling really at this point would be a Scott pickup conversation. The general fund revenues and expenses would be Scott and I, the, the town buildings, things of that nature. So we can have Andy come in if you want to look in the, at the highway budget, if you guys want to review it again and then see if you'd like for him to come in, you have specific questions for him. Is there anybody?
So I'm interested in, in, in Ryan, and it's not so much a specific question for Andy, but just to have his, his presence and hear him, how, how he feels and where he feels with his funds is always nice from a department head, for me.
Sure. So Andy and Ryan.
Shannon, when will we have an idea about theater? I mean, I know it has to deal with COVID and what's happening, but if, if it doesn't go forward, that means we'll, I mean, we have to think about what's going to happen with theater in the next fiscal year. By the summertime, we could be back to where we can have people in the theater.
Well, I guess maybe, Sue, I'll, I'll give you just a brief update. So the not-for-profit, you know, we've been talking with them. They have a, that proposed lease that we had taken a very brief look at back in November. We met again in early December, right after we met and we had talked through a couple additional items. The governor came out and, and, you know, restricted large gatherings again. And then we had a, a lot of changes in the entertainment industry with, with major and companies like Warner Brothers deciding they're not going to release any movies to theaters. They're all going to be coming to direct to digital next year. So we decided at that point, it was probably worthwhile to give it two months and, and get back together in February and see where we are. Hopefully by then, we'll have some understanding that we could bring you something in March. So that's why at the moment, we're sort of in a hiatus, kind of see how, how people feel about getting these vaccines. If we're at a point where we're going to get into areas where we can start to have, you know, larger gatherings again in, in indoor spaces. And then we got to see how people react to it. You know, are people going to go to the movies? Are they going to come and congregate in large numbers? It's, it's still sort of to be seen if people are going to do it right away. So we'll be a little bit cautious on that, but that's, that's where we stand on that.
All right. Okay, we can move on. Thank you all very much. Item number five, appeal of partial denial of public records.
So in your additional packet information that was in front of you, the last piece of paper is a summary of this, if you'd just like to take a minute to read. Before, Sue, you got that email right?
I did, yes.
Okay. And Stephen, your emails to both your email addresses bounced back to me tonight. It happened to Jigs last week, but I did try and email you these packages.
Is it a Gmail account? Because they've been having lots of issues.
Yeah.
It is, yep.
Yeah. Cause I, mine, one bounced as well for me, but.
I've, you two haven't read it?
No, I, I read it.
Okay. I think we've all read it, Shannon, at this point.
So I don't know where we go. Would you like for me to start with why I did a partial denial?
I, I personally don't feel that that is really necessary.
Me either. And I, I don't, it, it says appeal, but I don't, I don't see anyone here. So I'm not sure what exactly we need to do, if anything.
Well, there was, wasn't there some information here from an attorney?
Yeah, in that packet.
Appeal itself was requested by email. So I think that was what generated the item on your agenda. And so the question would be, you can grant the appeal, you can deny the appeal. It's really just, it's up to you as a board. You are the appeal authority under the public statute, so.
So what he's asking you to appeal would be providing him the private investigation results from hiring Scott Pickup. So we provided information to you as to why I did not provide it originally, and he is asking for you to overturn that and have me provide it. Or you can deny the appeal and not provide the information.
Understood. Does everyone see the reason?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, maybe if we should, should we discuss any of this in executive session?
I'm hesitant to say much here in open session. I'm not.
I think until such time, this board has had a conversation in an executive session that we.
Hold off on any action?
I would, yes.
Peter, you have any?
No.
Input?
It just says the background checks are not, you know, the last loss size. Senate here just says this is not subject to disclosure. So I don't know why we, we, we can probably deny his appeal.
I agree. I don't think we need to go into an executive session. We have an attorney's opinion that, that what Shannon did was legally correct.
Entertained a motion, yeah.
I'll make the motion that we deny the appeal as requested here based on the opinion of the law from our counsel and deny the appeal. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to deny the appeal based on information. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Appeals denied. Moving on, we need to review agenda items for next meeting, which our next meeting will be January 5th. I have, we'll have budget discussion, ratify the energy commission, and probably some other stuff by the time we get there. All right, anything else right now?
No, we have, no, nothing specific that I can tell you right now.
When might we get some information about the town hall work?
Updating that and give you the summary and the background and the current estimates. And I'll get that out to you this week. So you can look at it over the weekend and we can certainly talk about that on the 5th.
Okay, we need to review agenda items for our joint board meeting on December 29th. There is a list here already. We all have that list. Review and approve orders, bills and warrants.
Do we have any?
Well, none that I've seen tonight.
Have anything this evening for them for orders, bills and warrants? I didn't see anything.
They were emailed, they are upstairs, but I will have them at your joint board meeting for you guys to review and sign.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other business? Susan?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you. Ben?
No, I'm all set.
Stephen?
All set.
I'm all set. Peter?
Yeah, just an interesting email I received from a Skeetoe user a long time ago and current. Rope was on the ground again and he happened to hike up through there and replace it back up on the hangers again. So I don't know, are we going to be looking at another replacement rope here next year? It looks like somebody's not checking on that. Not like they have to walk up the thing. They could stand at the bottom with a pair of field glasses and see if the rope's off the, going up there. But this gentleman went and put it back up. So something to check on, Scott, and you give another.
Yeah, and just, let's make sure it got inspected. We, we were told it was going to be inspected. It might snow Thursday.
I got an email that everything was good to go, but I have not seen it specifically to the inspection. So I'll, I'll follow up and make sure. I haven't seen that either.
The rope is kind of a big deal. The history here, we seem to replace it a lot.
Expensive too.
And it's expensive. And then you have to pay someone to weave it.
Okay. Yep, I'll follow.
And actually Ryan told us it was hung up last time he was in a couple.
I don't know if he, this gentleman just emailed us the other day. It's my wife's cousin.
Thank you very much for doing that, sir. Anything else?
It's all we got.
No executive session?
Move to adjourn?
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.